Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Mr. Smith, would you begin with our roll call please?
Mr. Berno.
President.
Dennisson.
Here.
Ms. LaQua.
Here.
Ms. Snowden.
Alrighty, thank you all. First order of business is the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the October Board of Education meeting minutes?
Still moved.
Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Alrighty, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Alright, thank you. Now we turn to our student and staff recognition, which is a great time for us, always, always, and Superintendent Miller is going to start that.
Sure, we have two really great recognitions tonight. First, we're going to recognize our high school girls cross-country team who were state qualifiers, and I'm going to ask you all maybe if you want to stand up and come up here so everybody can see you. Be proud.[58.44][58.44](APPLAUSE). I'm going to ask, actually, Mr. Goldberg, Athletic Director, if he'd like to say a couple of words, and then Coach Acton is going to talk a little bit about their season.
Sure, I would just like to say, just congratulations on a tremendous season. They won their second straight league championship and qualified for their second straight state tournament. We have the, our lone senior, Molly Fagan, was also the league runner of the year, and Coach Acton was the coach of the year in the mid-state league in the Ohio Division, so just wanted to congratulate you on an amazing season. And the future is very bright with only one senior here in the crowd. I'm sure we'll see you guys here again next year and around this time.[118.11][118.11](LAUGHING). Coach Acton, say a few words.
There's much to say, and we've had our banquet, but I want to tell you a few things about this team. I want to start with leadership and the kind of collaborative leadership we've had from our seniors this season that are not present, as well as Molly. And I just want to say a couple of things about Molly. She has shown a lot of courage this season, it's been her senior year, and if you've followed the progression of her career, she's hardworking and always positive, strong work ethic, and she was Ohio last year, finishing 15th, and she had come across an injury this year and ran in pain the last month, and that means every practice and every race. She, leading up to her injury, had won every race this year, big and small, and was athlete of the week in the Columbus Dispatch, and I want to say that without those kind of efforts from her, this team would not have advanced to the state meet. She could have stepped aside and tried to heal, and that's not who she is. I'm very proud of her for that, and that kind of leadership, and that will go a long way for this, these young ladies. She was three-time academic All-Ohio, and two-time league champ, and three-time All-District runner. That's no small feat. I've been in this business at this particular school for 30 years, and I've seen a lot of athletes, and these, this group is very exceptional. Mr. Landis would agree. Mr. Landis has been with me at least half that time, a bit longer, having worked with his father and watched him as a high school athlete, and so he's been quite a huge part of this. So we have a team of coaches, a great team of runners, and real supportive parents with us today, that have been so integral in their success. Want to also then say a bit about our junior, Annie Pallidi, who had knee injuries last year and couldn't complete the season, came, decided to come out nonetheless this season, right, and run so well, and be so positive, and to help lead, help lead our team as well. And I say that because we have five freshmen, right? So Annie Pallidi also works hard in the classroom, was academic All-Ohio. Again, that's big news. Five, so that's Annie next to Molly, okay. We have Hannah Hayden on the end, and Maria Steinkie, Leah Tedes, we have Carly Place, and we have Ally Grisham. Those are our five freshmen. They work hard for each other. It was a team effort, and not one of them probably could just do it for us. They had to really work hard for each other. I think that's what most impressed me. We have a couple of these ladies, Ally and Maria, who were All-League and All-District, and I want to say that all of them would be academic All-Ohio wins, but they're so young (LAUGHING) that they didn't have GPAs (LAUGHING) in high school.
That's hard to do.
The process has been an honor for me this year and Coach Landis, and we would not have believed that they could have done what they did last year, knowing that the only person back, the only common thread from last year's team was Molly. And so, we started figuring it out after the first month, that they had that ability. They believed in themselves the whole time, and so I'm quite proud of them, and they're all of their accomplishments. And I want to thank everyone here, the school board, for recognizing their accomplishments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[405.12][405.12](APPLAUSE). Before we move on to our next recognition, I also want to thank Coach. These ladies obviously are very dedicated and hardworking, and thank you to the parents, but it also takes coaching, so, and I appreciate what, and Coach Landis and what everybody has done to support our athletes, and it is exciting to know that we have so many freshmen who will be back next year. That's very exciting. So once again, congratulations. I don't know, I have so much respect for cross-country runners, because, you know, when you run a mile and a half to warm up, and then you run three miles, and then, then let's run a couple of miles to cool down, and I'm like, okay.[456.12][456.12](LAUGHING). So, thank you so much for your hard work, especially in the classroom. To manage athletics and academics that you do is very impressive. So also, moms and dads, thank you so much for supporting them in our school district. We appreciate it. Thanks. The second recognition we'd like to have tonight is Lysan Smith. And, Lysan, she's in her boots, so you can stand if you want, but. Lysan is a graduate of the United Way's Project Diversity, and that is a project that the United Way began in 1989, and I'm going to read from this, their document to make sure I get it, get it right. "They wanted to give underrepresented, underrepresented communities a voice, diversifying all levels of the organizations they serve. And over the years, it has tremendously increased the number of people of color who are qualified and well-prepared to make decisions in our greater community." And there were 26 people who participated in this cycle, and it was an eight-month process. This was not just a couple of meetings, but it truly was an intensive program that Lysan participated in, and not only did she participate, but she was one of the two leaders of the group, elected by her peers in that group to be one of the leaders. No surprise to us who get to work with her every day. And so, just really proud of her, and for her accomplishments, and for also what then she brings back to our school district and our community in terms of diversity, and helping us to be more aware of the ways that we want to be diverse, and that we want to celebrate our diversity. So, Lysan, would you like to say anything?[558.04][558.04](LAUGHING).
Hi. So, as Superintendent Miller said, it was an eight-month process, and we had a lot of courses on how to be a good board member, but we also led a project, and that was one of my duties as a co-lead for a project where we worked with a nonprofit, and we worked with a new startup company to help them build a website, do some fundraising, think about their goals, and how they might want to proceed in the future. It was a lot of work, and I thought, well, this is what it's like being on a board. But it was a lot of work, but I had to surround 20-something other adults from across different business sectors in the city. It was awesome. They all had a lot of talent, but it also meant we all had different intentions. So, I definitely learned a lot from it, and I do feel like I'm already using some of the things that I learned in my day-to-day work life, so I appreciate the school district that we were able to be a part of this.
Thank you.[631.16][631.16](APPLAUSE).
I would just add, I've only obviously worked with Lysan for the last four months, but she is an impressive person, and somebody that I value coming to work with every single day and learning from her, and I try to give her credit for all the phrases that she teaches me to use. So, I know that her work with Project Diversity just really, again, strengthens the skillset that she brings to our community, so we're really fortunate to have her as part of our team. So, thanks.
Alrighty. Just also from the board, congratulations to the cross-country team, the commitment that you exhibit, and when you put that lion on your chest and you get out there and represent our school and our community, we're very proud to have you wear that for us on our behalf. And then, Lysan, your professional development that you continue to work on, on behalf of the students, all the students in our district, is truly appreciated, and your leadership has shown through once again with your peers, and we look forward to hear you bring that back to us in our district. So, thank you all. Your commitment to the district is overwhelming, and it makes us really proud to call you our students and part of our administration. So, alrighty, we're going to move on with our regular meeting, so this might be exit time.[710.75][710.75](LAUGHING). We will free up some seats for the next crowd.[714.04][714.04](LAUGHING). Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
What's Lysan's daughter's name? What's her daughter's name?
Her daughter's name? I don't know. What's Lysan's?
I'm sorry. What's Lysan's daughter's name?
Malaya. Malaya. I'm sorry.[734.87][734.87](LAUGHING). I just drew a blank. Trying to remember to go.
It could be pronounced Malia, Malaya.
I think it's Malia. I think she says Malia.
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 I didn't know if it was, I thought it might be Malia, not Malaya.
Okay.
Alrighty, well, that cleared the deck.[759.41][759.41](LAUGHING). Okay, cleared the deck. Alrighty.
They're the super fans.
Can we close that door if, do you mind closing that?
Yes.
Oh, they are? Okay. Alrighty, we're going to continue with those that are left. And we're going to begin with our board reports from our board members. Today was another big day as a board. A group of us attended the Ohio School Board Association Capital Conference. It's today and tomorrow. We were very well represented, not only with our superintendent and some board members, but also some of our administrators. Lysan was there also, even in her boot scooting around. So, we, today, I was very fortunate to attend, there's individual sessions that you attend, and one on creating a culture for teacher-leaders. Marley and I attended one on a structure for diversity in schools that was outstanding, and Lysan is also connected to that group. It's all, sort of, we're all in it together. And we also, Marley and I attended a conversation with the state superintendent session, and then I voted as the Bexley delegate to the Ohio School Board Association meeting on the issues and the new leadership and so forth. And then tomorrow, we have more sessions, and it'll be a repeat, but the coup de grâce tomorrow is the closing speaker for the conference is our own graduate alum, Josh Radner. He will be addressing the benefits of arts programming in our schools. So, we're going to try and get front row seats, and his parents are even coming to the conference with us, so it's going to be quite exciting to, yay, go Lions with him. Also, just a quick report from the BEF. The youth philanthropy program is in full swing, and the grants committee received nine grants for consideration, so we'll get a follow-up on what was actually funded later. I would also like to acknowledge the loss of Lauren Thompson. He was the superintendent of Bexley Schools from October 1979 through May of 1985, and he is credited with laying the groundwork to establish the Bexley Education Foundation. So, we are most thankful for his vision, and we acknowledge his loss to the district. I also attended the special education PTO meeting. They are having a fundraiser to buy books for our libraries that have students with, the main characters having disabilities, so they're trying to fund that for our school libraries. And Cliff Mason also spoke on social thinking, which we did here at one of our board meetings, but he was joined by a parent, Suellen Bennett, who had a student who attended the summer camp for social thinking, and she gave her perspective on it. It was quite interesting. And this, this special education PTO typically has an interesting speaker or some program to present at each one of their meetings, so if ever you have a chance to go, you can really learn quite a bit about a specific topic that they have, you know, want to highlight for that meeting. So, now I'm going to pass it on to Mr. Dennisson.
Thank you. I don't have any reports from the rec. board. I just wanted to say, obviously, we had an election day a couple last week, and most I, I think it's so difficult to run for office, and I just want to say thank you to everyone, both people who are currently on the board and those who aren't, for putting themselves out there, to opening themselves up to public debate and comments, and I think that it takes a lot of courage to do that, and it speaks to how much our schools mean to this community, that people were willing to, to put themselves out there and to, and to work hard and put their money where their mouth was, mouth is in a lot of instances. And I just think it speaks a lot to, to our schools and how much, how much they mean to our community, that people were invested in, invested in the election, and I think there were lots of great opportunities for debate and for conversation around issues that are really important to the future of our schools, and I know we're going to continue to have those discussions as we move into strategic planning, and so I just wanted to say thank you to everyone, regardless of challenger, incumbent, winner, loser, to, for, for trying and doing it, because it's, it's hard work. And so, you know, I, I think it's just something that not everyone can know what it's like until you do it, and so, thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Snowden.
So, I had the opportunity to attend OFTBA as well, which I enjoyed earlier. I went to the meetings at Melissa's, as well as Governor John Kasich was there at the general session. It was interesting because he forgot his teleprompter, so he spoke out the cover of his daughter, which was interesting.
Not pretty.
Yeah. So, he talked about, there's two main couple of points were on educating our students to be adaptable and ready for the workforce that's changing, and making sure that we educate our children about drug abuse and prevention. So, I said it in about 30 minutes.
He said in 30 minutes.
But it was interesting, it's always, I think it is, it shows the power of our group that we, that the governor is willing to talk to for hours. So, that was interesting. I just wanted to make note on the diversity workshops that OFTNA or every superintendent, she mentioned, and so I just wanted, I, as, as Mr. Dennisson was saying, I think one of the things that was really brought to light in this election was our need to continually focus on inclusion and equity issues, and I think we still, you know, have, have some work to do on that, as most communities do. So, I just wanted to highlight and make sure that people have on their calendars this day of conversations about rates, and our best college library, something's happening in November, and I think that we need to have these conversations in many ways, in many forums, but I think that's, that's one of the ones that I look forward to, hearing what everybody has to say there, and encourage people to attend.
Oh, one quick thing I wanted to mention. At the delegate meeting, when we cast votes, there was, Governor Kasich had asked that, presented a referendum to require all school boards to have three business people on their, we voted against it, I will have you know. It went down resoundingly, so, within our, the Ohio School Board Association. So, yay, I don't know if it'll be dead, a dead issue, but the board did vote against it, so, I meant to mention that earlier. Alrighty, Mr. Berno.
Tech roundtable is currently, yeah, I had a high guess since, I'm new on it, the tech director in place, but, so, no report on that athletic board meeting, there wasn't one last week, the last one, it was actually moved in the previous week, I'm not able to attend that, but I know that there was some discussion about, again, the wish list of facilities, for athletic facilities, and tennis courts, and track, and, as well as the discussion on, again, on funding and booster, the interaction between the boosters and, and the schools, but again, that's, I wasn't on there, so I don't know the details of that for what I know of that. Since I don't have any real reports, a couple of things I want to brag about for our schools. I went to the, the high school blue and white night, which is their boys' and girls' basketball team. They, I think it's the first, it's the first year they did it together. It was Friday night from 6:00 to 8:30. Ms. Mitchell was there as well, watching me shoot horribly through one. I was one for five.[1275.31][1275.31](LAUGHING). I didn't make one, and we did win an ice cream from Johnson's, our team did. So, but it was fantastic, and there was a lot of people there. It was, it was, and the cheerleaders, of course, were fantastic, especially the third stunt. Girls' team, boys' team, they did some practice drills, they did some shooting around, they did contests with the crowd, they had the middle school teams there, they had the coaches there, and it was, it was extremely well-attended. I've been there before where it hasn't been well-attended, and it was, it was, there was a buzz in the whole gym, and a lot of people stayed for the entire two hours or so, and so, I want to give credit to Coach Phillips and Coach Price, boys and girls' coaches, at the varsity level, for putting that together, and, most importantly, the cheerleaders, you can tell, and everybody acknowledged, they kind of ran the show, and were the stars in the show.
Yeah, and Coach Brooke.
That's right. Coach Brooke was fantastic, and of course, a little energetic at United. The other thing I want to brag about is I was at the Halloween cabaret that a vocal ensemble put on, and you got front row seats and front table, and even with three, seven year, seventh grade girls sitting with me at the table, it was fantastic, and unbelievable talent with our vocal ensemble. Unbelievable talent, there was parents accompanying their, their students, singing Tesla, I think Amy Blosser sang a song, can't remember, it's a, but it was a lot of varied music, it wasn't modern, just modern day music, there was some Spice Girls in there. So, it was fantastic, and, and I know it comes around once every year, but any chance you have to see the vocal ensemble, and especially in that setting, and just, again, the atmosphere. And it was, it was packed on Friday night, or Saturday night, and then Sunday, they had a huge walk-up crowd of like 50 or 60 people buying tickets and packed in the house again, so, a couple of unbelievable things that I went to just over the last month or so, that from an athletic standpoint, from a vocal ensemble standpoint, are just, just really great things to do that, and why I just didn't mention it, actually, why I decided to run, because all the things that we have to offer, I wanted to be part of that and make sure that things going on.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Ms. Mitchell.
The Bexley Minority Parents Alliance had another meeting that Ms. Miller was actually one of the starring guests there, and I think you're planning to present on that, but she talked about a number of issues that are facing particularly students of color at Bexley and Bexley, as well as Stephanie Krasnaski presented from the college counseling office, and Kerry Washburn presented information about the career education program that continues to grow, is gaining some popularity with our students, and obviously, she was just presenting the information that was upcoming to go out to parents here shortly. I attended the Franklin County School Board Members Alliance meeting. They have postponed their November meeting to December 2nd, and initially, I was selected to assist with membership and recruitment, and you'll want to probably transition that to someone else. I do think that that's something that they need to do a little bit, a better job of, getting our student school districts involved. We obviously were presented with our foundational document for our initial policy to have the state look at implementing, implementing supports for students who do not speak English, if that's not their first language. And so, that drafted policy was presented. I again want to acknowledge the work that Dr. Webster put together in putting our information together. The rest of the school districts are implementing that format to make it a little easier to read, so, yeah. We did that. And, so that should go out to everyone. I think they're still working on their foundational files, and Charlie's been absent for a while, but he was there this last meeting. And then, we also discussed the necessity for the group to advocate on behalf of our school boards from an empowerment standpoint, recognizing the tremendous amount of work that we all do individually for our schools, or they, it goes beyond just regular board meetings. It's intense work at times, and the president of this organization talked about the necessity for board members to continue professional development, to grow in their education and knowledge of the school board, and demanding that same level of respect for, for the role of a board member. He talked to the group about how sometimes school boards have a, are discounted, even though we're elected officials, are discounted, because, you know, we may not necessarily have the same requirements to be in office. Pretty much anybody can run for their local school board. And so, he just talked about, you know, the necessity for districts to look at, with their boards requiring professional development, and of course, I spoke up about our board protocols and the fact that we have a professional development component in it, and so they have requested a copy of our board protocols and roles as sort of. You know, to take in the lead in that regard, so I'm excited to see where that goes for the Franklin County group. And I would like to take this time to thank my fellow board members for incredible support in the last several months, while I was attempting to run for reelection, and I'd like to thank the community who also supported me. Congratulations, Minio, on her way into the school board. But what I would like to tell you more than anything is for you to have called me and to commit to continuing your work around equity and inclusion. Speaks volumes about the three years that we've been together, and certainly while my path will take other directions in the next few years here, I will certainly continue to light that fire, so, and I know that, I appreciate the fact that we will continue that dialogue together, so, is all I have.
Alrighty, well, thank you. Another thing that happened today at the conference, when Marley and I were at the Structure for Diversity that Luntangi put on, they thanked us for our gender identity and expression policy, that they were taking that and developing that in their district, and they were quite happy to have something to start with, and all, their entire team, their department thanked us very much and thought that we were, you know, had cutting-edge commitment to inclusion.
So, perhaps we can poach their diversity.
We are going to, we're going to look at theirs as well, so we have, this is what the conference is about, sharing of ideas. We don't all have, all have to reinvent the wheel. We're sharing ideas and commitment, and so, it just continues, every session, we find another reason to work together and help each other. So, it was a very collaborative day today, and it was, it was great to be with everyone today.
Sorry to elaborate.
I keep remembering things (LAUGHING) as the day, as the night goes on. Ms. Thomas.
So, with student council, the last couple of months have been pretty busy, and we have a busy next couple of months, so, the past basically homecoming already happened, and we had record attendance, which was awesome, but we did not have record sales, because we do, and I know, like, how do you have records? we do, and I know, like, how do you have record attendance when you're not record sales? So we, the week before, have everyone, or have a lot of our student council members selling tickets in the lobby for ten dollars, and at the door they're fifteen, so we lost about three hundred dollars because so many people bought them before, because we had really good people standing out there and selling tickets. So next year, what we hope to do is we're going to probably raise the money from ten to twelve, so we've lose half of that money and not all of it, because we were really surprised, we're looking at the budget, we're like, there's no way we don't have more money than this, but that's what we figured the problem was. And our feedback from the student body was really great with homecoming, the faucet center was beautiful, the people were so nice, the great water station, which is always good, and we had no complaints about our DJ, which has never happened before, so that's just something I wanted to put in there really quick. And we think we want to continue with a theme for next year, because everybody seemed to like that, a lot of people came with masquerade masks on their own, I mean, and everybody wore them, which I was surprised at, because sometimes Bexley, you know, doesn't really engage, like, the students don't really engage in some of the school planned activities, so it was really great to see a lot of my classmates and peers there. The pep rally went really well, it was kind of an intro to Clash of Classes, which is going to be next Tuesday, right before Thanksgiving break, and it had support from all the classes. We started with the seniors and kind of gave them the lead in this, instead of giving the lead to the freshmen, because then it kind of just goes down a little bit when we give the lead to the freshmen, but it was really, really engaging, and everyone was participating and yelling and cheering for their class and cheering for the school, so that was a really great thing to see. And then the present and the future, so like I just said, we're currently working on Clash of the Classes, which is basically what it sounds like, you compete against all other classes, and the end game is usually just like bragging rights, but we decided this year to have a trophy, and to put the trophy up somewhere in like our student council case, or to put the trophy in the main lobby, or somewhere where people can see it, that would be really cool, to see that like, oh, the senior class won two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, and so on and so on, just so you can kind of have more than just bragging rights, so people will remember it. We're, again, working on that, and we had our first meeting today, so that meant that we're delegating and making sure everybody is getting things done, and our class presidents have been really great with engaging and getting their classes to engage, and something really important about charity month and Clash of the Classes, which is inside charity month, is our inclusion, I mean, I just heard everyone talking about that, and so that's something that we really focus on, is we want everybody to be able to have the opportunity to participate, or to have the opportunity to engage, like, we have some people that don't really want to do sports and things like that, and we got a lot of feedback on that last year, so we're having a kind of like in the know type game in the library the lunch before, so that if you don't want to do a sport and you don't want to be in front of the class or the entire school, you can just have kind of your own thing in the library, but be able to contribute to Clash of the Classes, which I think is really neat. This week, this weekend, my event chair and I went pretty much just up and down Main Street, begging for donations for our student raffle, so we've had a lot of good cooperation, teachers raffle off things, they raffle off, sometimes their parking lots for a week, which is so nice, that brings in a lot of money. Seniors raffle off items, I know Tyler Mitchell, Henry Brede Meyer, people like that are doing like a pedicure date, so it's just fun things, and we raise a lot, a lot of money that way. And again, this whole event is about student involvement, and everybody seems to be wanting to participate, and like I said, Bexley doesn't sometimes get in the full spirit, and this is really where I see students get in the full spirit and engage and get with their class and start to raise money for a good cause, so I think that's awesome. And then, I don't know if someone was going to mention this, but the musical is this week, it's for, it's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, so I just wanted to remind everyone and let you all know that that is happening this week, and they've been working so hard, I mean, coming here from Torch, you know, there's costumes everywhere, there's backpacks everywhere, and stuff like that, so, yeah, student council has been going really great, and thank you for everyone for helping out.
Rose, can I ask you a question, somebody asked me since I was kind of sending an email, but here I am and ask you now, can you tell me how the prom works? Somebody was telling me that, is that, I know that there was a parent who was in charge of it for the last five years, and now graduated, so somebody was like, who is going to do prom? I said, I don't know, I mean, yeah, but Rose will probably know.
See, we, student council doesn't do prom, so that's not, that's not our deal, it's usually the junior class parents and their kids that help out, so I don't really know what we'll be doing this year again, but that's not student, under student council.
Well, thank you, you've got a lot to report, you've been busy. Alrighty, the next. We're going to do the executive reports, Superintendent Miller, we'll start with you.
Okay, so we can skip the first couple of slides, which were our recognitions, unless you'd like to see pictures again of our great oaks there. Thank you, Rose, for talking about the musical, but it is Bye Bye Birdie, I personally am looking forward to it, as I performed in Bye Bye Birdie when I was in high school, so I'm very, yes, I did.
Who were you involved with?
Well, I was a dancer, because I was a cheerleader, so you were automatically made a dancer, so.
I was like the dad, I don't know, I got to see my kids, that's all I remember.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm looking, very much looking forward to that, so I hope others will be able to attend that. So last week, we had two days of professional development, and the, we had a number of things going on, teachers, we had work around our forty developmental asset survey results, and how to use that data, and Lyson Smith, who was here earlier, led that work along with people from Search Institute who do that work, and as we talk about, you know, students being successful, and the governor's speaking about the opioid addictions that we have, one of the great things about this work is, is what assets do our students need to be less likely to engage in risky activity, and so for us to know what our students feel and believe their assets are, because it really matters what the students believe about this, not so much what we think they should believe, this is really important work, students are more successful academically and on into life if they have, the more assets that they have, and one of those being adults at school, multiple adults outside of their parents that support them, and I'm really proud to report that one of the, the goal areas for the high school this year is to make sure that each student has an adult that he or she can connect with here at school, and so they're really being very, very thoughtful and intentional about making sure that we're connecting every single student with an adult, so great work there. In the elementary, that was K-12, looked at the survey results, the elementary spent a whole day on foundational reading skills, and as we move forward with, in strengthening our foundational reading instruction, there was some good foundational work, thank you to Dr. Lipsit for, for planning that and for leading that work. Middle school all, worked on tier one instructional practices, which really is a tie to foundational reading, so at the middle school, we're talking, tier one instruction is the, the high quality instruction that needs to take place in every single classroom, so that's the, if you think about response to intervention or RTI, tier one is classroom level instruction that all students get, and we, Mr. Cottle at the middle school spent really a good amount of time working with his staff on that, to the point that they've identified specific things that they would like feedback on during the walkthrough process that happens, so when principal is in visiting, he's going to be able to give them targeted feedback, and so that, that's an area, as we move into strategic planning, you'll hear about, more about that with common instructional goals and instructional practices. And then high school also worked on argumentative writing, they're working with Ohio State University on that, argumentative writing is a big part of the English Language Arts Standards, but also in grades five through twelve, that skill is supposed to cross all content areas, and so the entire staff worked on that, so a great day. And then for the first time, we provided some professional development to our administrative assistants and our secretaries, and they had some work on safety and security, and Mr. Eichenberry led that along with.
Detective Bird?
Burton?
Bird, or.
Sorry, detective, okay, Detective Bird came in and helped with that, and then James Harless worked with our staff on using the website calendar, so we can have those updated and have a consistent calendar that we're using, and then Scott Bushman provided some Microsoft Office work with the staff, and they were so appreciative of this work and have asked for more, so on December twenty-second, when the students are off, but we're here, we're going to provide some more professional development, and I'm committed that we would continue to do that for them over the course of the year, because if we're going to be a growth mindset school district, that includes everybody growing, everybody needs to have an opportunity. Couple of quick items I wanted to point out on your agenda, a staff salary change, Courtney, Kayla, sorry, thank you, I didn't have my notes, she, there is a salary change, and I've made a commitment that we would get those right the first time this, she received a year's worth of STRS credit for her internship, and she provided that to us upfront, but we didn't give that to her, because typically you don't get STRS credit for an internship, but in her case she did, we confirmed that with STRS, and so we're making that change to be accurate, and again, she provided all of that prior to ever signing a contract, so that was our misunderstanding of that. And then also policies, we've been through these a few times, I'll, I'll save those for questions when we get to the policy section, and that's all that I needed to report.
Alright.
Can I ask one question about the professional development?
Yes.
Not really, I mean, a question, I just know that we often hear grumbling from people about like, ah, all the days off and the late starts, so anything we can do to promote, what, what is that our, our teachers and our staff are doing on those days, I think the better off we are, because I think one, I know I have a couple of times when parents have told me, you know, they complained about late start or a day off or something, or I've commiserated with them about how hard it is to find childcare, but then you tell them what teachers are actually doing that day, they're like, oh, okay, well, at least it's not just, you know, donuts in the break room, it's like they're actually working on stuff, and so the more we can share that story, I think that's one of those, is one of those things that people don't know enough about.
Right.
All the professional development, that especially our district does, and maybe other places don't do, so that's just a great story to share.
That is, and I, we, I do try to push things out, but the more ways that, that anybody has ideas about how to share that information, you're right, it is important, and teaching in, in today's world is a complex, complex feat, and we have, to think that teachers and staff members don't need time to learn and develop their skills, we, we can't meet the needs of students if we're not learners ourselves, so I appreciate that, and I appreciate the support of the board in those days, and we will continue to work on that communication. Thank you.
Alrighty, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. As far as board items go, you'll see a request for approval of the dental insurance two-year rates, or rates for two years, I think we received a pretty good quote, our Delta Dental for two years, it's a one percent increase this first year, and then a zero percent from that the next year, and those rates are typically a hundred percent board paid if you're a full-time staff member, your board picks up all of that cost. For monthly financials, you'll see the exhibit, as of right now, the state funding is still, we're, we're still a formula district, and it looks like we're about thirty thousand dollars off from being a cap, so I, I'll be watching that every other week, but as of right now, we're still a formula district. And then some variations from that, so on, on the forecast, or the monthly forecast document, you'll see all other revenue increased or is ahead of projections of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, a large chunk of that is the city income tax sharing agreement that we have, and I believe, is it One Gateway where Jenny's Ice Cream is, is that One Gateway, is that correct? We have an income sharing agreement for that construction project, and so that was paid earlier than when it typically is, so that's a very, that's a reason for the variation of the increase in all other revenue, that'll catch up after December, because that's when it's usually been paid, but we got it a couple of months early. The other reason for fluctuation or difference from forecast is the state will catch up payments on enrollment, and they caught up a payment for last year, so when, when they make you whole on last year, they, they pay you all upfront, so we got a one-time windfall of, I believe, about forty thousand, forty to fifty thousand, so that was unexpected on the forecast. And so again, this, this monthly forecast is, is a little bit new for, for you, I've projected costs based on trends and historical patterns, with a few exceptions when it comes to things that are known at the time of the five-year forecast. So everything is tied to the forecast, so if you would, if I would show you the detail of my monthly forecast, if you totaled up all the monthly forecasts, it would tie back to the five-year that we approved in October, and then each month may have a variance depending on what I knew at that time, so.
So you're pretty close.
Yeah, it, it is pretty close, I mean, the, the two big differences are the income tax, which I'm going to talk here in just a second, the all other revenue, that's line one point zero six, and then personnel, or personal services, which is our, our wages and salaries, so when you look at that document, anytime you see a red is not good, anytime you see black, it's good, so on the expense side, red is negative, but on, or I'm sorry, on the revenue side, when it's red, it's bad, but on the expense side, when it's negative, it's black. So it's not really intuitive, but. And then, so finally, the October income tax data, it's a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars less from last year, October two thousand sixteen, calendar year two thousand sixteen collection was eight million, this calendar year seventeen is seven point two million, that's a decrease of seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, and so you'll see the, this is, just looking at October again, so if you look at the green boxes, that is the payroll taxes, so employers withhold that, you can see, if you just look at the numbers, you can see that that's steadily increasing, so that's a good thing, in my opinion. Where we see a decrease in this October is the quarterly or the red, so that's individual quarterly filings that they file for three, three months at a time. We saw a decrease there, and the individual, which is kind of a catch-up, so they may have had, in the blue, they may have had an extension on their filings, so we still see some residual payments in, in this October collection. And then, looking at it on a calendar year basis, so you can see calendar year sixteen has been our high mark, and the big difference there is in the red and blue, the, again, the red being the quarterly filings, the blue being the individual filings, I believe two thousand sixteen, I mean, again, we don't get any data, but it looks like two thousand sixteen was just an anomaly year, where, where something happened with our tax payments or our individuals in our community that we don't know about. So if, if you take out calendar year sixteen, you can see a, a steady growth in, there's a, there's a little bit of growth or trend in growth. So we'll, we'll monitor this, or we won't get much more data in January, which is our next collection, that'll primarily be just payroll taxes in June.
That's what I was going to ask, did you think it would, some of that would make up in January, or maybe next?
I think we'll, we'll have a better sense of what's going on in April, when we get that collection, because that'll be the early filers.
Yeah.
I believe that catches, that is January, February filers for calendar year seventeen, we'll get paid for that in April, so we'll, we'll have a little bit more data in April, or actually in May.
Okay.
Any questions about anything? Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, Dr. Lipsit.
Thank you, President LaQua. As I've mentioned in my last, actually, probably the last four board reports, maybe even going back to October, curriculum revisions, and part of those curriculum revisions involves the business curriculum at the high school. My plan had been to get all three courses of study in time for the superintendent, for Superintendent Miller to review in advance of tonight's board meeting, and also in advance of the Wednesday meeting, she meets with President LaQua to review items for the following boards, board meeting, however, I wasn't able to do that, we were still making the revisions, and I just received them too late from the teacher, so as a result, I would like the board to have copies, paper drafts of these courses of study, for these three courses in particular, entrepreneurship and AP economics, both, both drafted by our new teacher, Matt Green, and then AP computer science principals. My, my thinking is that in December, I would ask the board for approval of these three courses, and they would be offered in fall of twenty eighteen. Also in December, the high school will have a revised program of studies, our proposal would be to include these three courses in the program of studies for approval for school year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and that's all I have for tonight.
And you're going to bring these back for a vote at the December meeting?
I will bring them back to the December meeting.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Eichenberry.
President LaQua, members of the board, a couple topics I want to share with you tonight, under the leadership of Principal Dr. Gage and his teachers at Montrose, those folks would like to do a little pantry. You. The information with the task board docs, extensively it is a food pantry that anyone can put things in or take out to assist folks in need. They are modeling a program that the state board is performing. I believe they said it's just across the street on Livingston. And this person is helping the guy who teaches at Montrose. So I know that it needs a resolution, but just a nod from you to go forward with the city to introduce this food pantry to the government strip in front of the school by the bus stop. It's the location that those folks have been assigned along the, along Main Street. Correct, so.
Right in front of school?
Correct.
Strip, the grass strip closest to the street, not on, not on sort of the school lawn.
So that will have to be approved by the city?
Yeah, it's within the right-of-way, so it's just a, and they, indicative of our community of teachers, they're, they're working, blazing the trail with Merkels wearing. So I'm following up the paperwork that Dr. Gage sent over to, to, after this proceeding to the board. Yes, because it's in right-of-way. The city wants to, wants to understand it, is, is this board wants to understand when structures are placed within our space?
Is this actually on the school property? Is this something that we have to maintain once we agree to, I mean, not that it's a big maintenance, it's just here, it's on the school property.
It, it, it's in the right-of-way, which we care for, so yes, we will.
Is there a reason why you wouldn't want to have it on the outside or is it on the inside of our, our property?
Very good question. The, the information from them was that they wanted to do it adjacent to the, to the bus stop. It could certainly be within our, within our space.
Would it face the sidewalk or face the street?
I think in this case, it'll face the sidewalk.
Okay, because you'd have to have to have access to it. I mean, it would be.
Would it be permanently, like, so that it's?
It's a movable, four-by-four post.
Street?
I know, that's what I, that's what I like, I thought Alicia was saying.
Somebody's standing, opening it up.
Is there a reason, I mean, if we're going to, if we're going to do it, what's the reason for not just putting it over there?
On our property.
The most safe location.
Sorry, we're all running down here. It seems very unsafe to have it facing the street where you're literally being a bus when you're opening. You'd have to get it. And then it seems kind of strange to have it facing the sidewalk where it doesn't get as much.
Nobody will, you'll just see the back of it in the street.
So if it could be facing out to the street, but on the inside edge of the sidewalk.
Other side of the sidewalk, makes more sense. We don't have any objection to it, I don't think.
I mean, is the school, I'm assuming the school is working to do stuff with kids around it, so the kids will stay, I mean, ideally, that's all, it's part of a service, kind of a initiative, which is.
Close within them.
So if that's the case, we don't need city approval? Or would we still need city approval?
City approval, structure.
Of a structure, okay. I mean.
But I mean, I don't think it's.
But we're going to, we're less likely to get denied if it's on our, correct?
Correct. And I do not think so.
So who's, who's it, who's officially running that? Is it the school, is it the school organization, is it Dr. Gage?
PTO?
When it becomes a structure, it is the school.
No, I understand the structure. I, I'm just wondering.
Who's building it?
Who's in charge?
Who's?
Going to make sure that it's maintained and filled and.
Correct, Dr. Gage.
Okay, so it's three best, so it's kind of a.
It's a school program, school project. An outreach project that Montrose would like to take on and incorporate.
But not PTO?
No, no, it's, it's kind of classroom project, taking on support for their community.
So ultimately, it falls within the, the structure's in place. Hey, it's in the school, dude, maintenance, you need to do X, so that's, that's the, what ones they go over side of it. Grounds crew would be the ones who would have eyes on along with the folks over there at Montrose in terms of long-term care, long-term eyes on and ensure it's presentable. Secondarily, PTO members, PTO members, Anna Ramsden and Tricia Goxterer will want to preempt information left to board. Now that in the future, they will come with a plan to renovate the equipment on the K2 playground. This is following the Cassingham project. President LaQua asked to get in front of that, that space to try to help have a, have some oversight of it and help, help that process. Those folks have responded. They are the members who have taken the lead on that project. For coming, I mean, coming to you.
And they're to have new surface in that, in that playground, right?
It is multiple at this point.
And it's going to be ADA's surface?
That, that is what the district has said we would do.
The black color, correct, or the color that doesn't change?
Under the, yep, under the high wear space, yeah. I have a, within the agenda tonight, there's a request for you to approve the board meeting. And we'll have more coming as we continue to fulfill positions. Coming up, I'll have a maintenance industrial for you.
These are all replacement, rehires, new hires. New, not new position, new, replacing staff.
Replacing reservations.
Did you give the, Anna Ramsden's the president of the PTO at Maryland. Does she have some sort of timeline? You know, a lot of times we start these playground things, and all of a sudden, there's, we're crunched at the end and we're forced to approve things, not a, you know. Yeah, you know what I mean, but we need to, we need to make sure that they have a timeline of some sort to work with. So your job is easier and that we're not calling a special meeting to approve something? Okay.
They are, they're cognizant of that. They want to, they'd most likely speak with you at the next meeting.
Good.
And they're working on their, their efforts there.
Because currently, the, the sort of five-year forecast for kind of major capital, kind of grounds improvements was that Maryland's would happen, the surfacing would happen in the summer, right?
Happened this past summer, correct, for the, for the large.
Big one, okay. So had we, had we scheduled, had we slotted off for doing this one, the K2 one? In that sort of sequence of playgrounds?
It, we really wanted to space them, so Cassingham would actually fall in next summer, and then Maryland, K2 would probably fall in, you know, to, to balance it. So it got jumbled up, so it's.
But we, we had planned for doing it at some point.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Oh, yeah.
It's not out of the realm of what we were ever attempting to do, meaning to do, so no, it's just.
So are we back on, are we back on schedule?
Again, the, the forecast would have been a skip a year because of cash flow.
Right.
That's not how, how it played out. So is, is, is it okay, sure? But is it, is it what we drew up back?
Hey, I mean, I think, not to put a kibosh on anyone's enthusiasm, because I don't want to do that. But like, if the district is saying that we plan to replace the surfacing for that playground in two years, and tell Maryland that's when the new playground will be installed, even if they raise all the funds, theoretically that they could install it this summer. Now, we would have to agree to do that, but I mean, they're, it's sort of, it's, I think it's our call to say if that's when we want it done, that's.
Well, it's definitely our call. With the facility audit, it, you know, awaiting that info, that, that'll shine a bright light as to what we're needing to do or what we should be needing to do. And so it's, it's certainly nothing set in stone, it's all to be discussed. It's a minor playground as comparative to the other ones, so.
Didn't you say Cassingham was moved up a year? Because they had, so we have a precedent where, and Maryland was supposed to have done, been done the year before, but it was delayed because of the contractor. So it has been jammed up, the money was appropriated properly. It just wasn't spent at the time it was supposed to be spent. So it looks like it's back. Maryland was, and Cassingham were the same year because, but Maryland was supposed to be the year before. Cassingham was a year early, Maryland was a year late, so they ended up being in the same year.
I do think it is important that we don't set those sorts of precedents, though. I mean, we, we long-term plan for our facilities, our funds accordingly. And, you know, while I love the playground, it's amazing, and Montrose has a great time out there. I do think it's important that we, I mean, we're responsible to make sure that we stay on schedule with our funds. And if it's already planned for, then great. If, you know, Cassingham had raised the money, then when it was time to do the playground, we could have said, let's go, pull the trigger, we don't have to wait. So, you know, I, I do think it's, because I, I find it a little troubling that we're going to tell one of our, our playgrounds that maybe is in need of renovation, now they have to wait because somebody leapfrogged them. That's just, I mean, there's just no reason for us to be making that decision, so.
I, I also think, I also think that points to something I know that we've been wanting to do ever since, I think, Montrose started the, maybe I guess, maybe it's even the Maryland one before that, of having a more thoughtful and consistent policy around how this happens. Because part of it is, is it's that one instance where community groups raise funds to place things on our property, that in these instances also triggers us to spend additional funds. And so making sure that we have some guidelines about how that gets done and how, so that it can be done thoughtfully and consistently. And maybe isn't such a big hassle for the community to raise hundreds of thousands of dollars at singular points in time. But I think we were waiting for all of them to get through the process, so we weren't.
Need to finish them off.
Advantageing any one of them. And so hopefully, when this one's done, they'll all be relatively new, and we can actually have a discussion about how to do that in the future, which is great.
President LaQua's impetus was to get ahead of this one, it's small.
Yeah.
Get it, we'll get it done, and.
I thought it was already planned to be done this next summer. Anyway, it was on the schedule to be done like this summer.
But since the PTOs are the ones who bear the burden there, we helped ask Principal Hudson, when the room returned in the fall to take that poll and find out what. And so, yeah, like you said, yes, we, that is our plan, so we need to mesh.
I mean, I do appreciate what you're saying, that it's on the PTO's responsibility to bear the raising of the funds for some of these projects, but when it's coming before the board to approve and appropriate funds, then we have to, you know, once this project is done, say, okay, here's the process. Process is all I'm saying.
I, I think this is another one of those areas where through the strategic planning process, there'll certainly be a facilities component of strategic plan, and we can, I think, have, okay, so from this point forward, what's the plan? And start to have, and developing a comprehensive maintenance, repair, upgrade, kind of what, what has to happen from a facility standpoint and have that planned out, knowing that sometimes, just like at our homes, things happen. But if we have, I think, an overall plan, I think John would probably, is anxious to have that as well. And getting this audit, it's complete, but getting our report will help us with all of that. So I think we'll definitely be able to do that.
Well, to be clear, though, the Maryland large playground is, we only replaced the flooring. They have the oldest playground now, because that was done 10 years ago. Maryland.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's been a while, so, yeah, so it's, we have synced it out, the playground itself a little bit, it's just the flooring we did recently. All right, I know all the confusion, but thank you.
Thanks, Sean, for getting out of that one.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. All righty, do we have anyone here this evening for public comment? No, all righty, save me that time again. We're going to move on to the Personnel Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the Personnel Consent Agenda?
So moves.
Second.
Do we have any items to discuss prior to approval?
I have one, really, I guess it was a suggestion. As I was looking at, I saw that the volunteer list, we listed the, at the sort of side, the dates that we've done, like our background checks, and like the FBI checks, which I think is nice. Because a lot of times for us, we're asked to approve these folks, and there's no criteria for us to judge it on. So it's, you know, we sort of just approve it. And so it's nice to have that information, which I would appreciate. I was wondering whether that information should also appear for like our sub-list? And other folks who aren't like permanent employees, just as kind of a confirmation that these individuals who were saying are qualified to be in our schools and are active as students have kind of passed whatever background checks that they're supposed to. I think it's also just good for the public if they are looking at these documents. And they see folks' names, they have some confirmation within that document that, yeah, you know, all these folks have passed a background check, whether it's actually their, the dates, or it's just a statement at the top that says, this is the stuff that any, any of these folks have to go through in order to be on this list, just FYI.
So subs, we don't employ our subs, we employ them through the ESC. They have to be background checked before they can come, same with any full-time. So volunteers, the standard for background check is not as strong, but we employ the full standard that we do for staff. We can certainly add that as, these are the things, but we would, we don't bring, I don't bring anything as a recommendation for hire that hasn't, that hasn't been completed because it has to be.
Sure.
So we won't bring them to you until every single document is in.
Yeah. And I, and I wasn't saying it because I had any question about that. It was more that if people access these lists of information, you know, like this is the criteria that someone has to go through in order to be on this list, so that there's, you know, confidence that.
I don't think we need to.
Just like a little like note, it doesn't need to be printed.
Well, do we want to have that? I think that's something we, we can add. Do we want to do that?
I think it's a good, a good point, but I think because it's already a requirement, if we just know within the document that those folks maybe started or whatever, have completed the necessary.
They won't show up here.
They won't show up unless they have.
Nobody comes here and no, no names show up until it's all finished.
So it's just like a sentence at the top, you know, all, you know, it likes a, it was just a, I saw it on the, on the volunteer. Well, that's interesting that that's on there.
Because we would not have to do that for them.
Sure.
But we go it, and I support that, but we can do that, I can have a note.
I think there's just lots of sensitivity these days about folks interacting with students and, you know, making sure that they've, you know, gone through all the, all the checks that we need to do.
Okay, is there any, are there any other questions for discussion? All right, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Denison?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Bardo?
Yes.
Ms. Noda?
Yes.
Ms. LaQua?
Yes. All righty, on to the Business Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the Business Consent Agenda?
So moves.
Second.
Again, are there any items to discuss before approval?
Um, the student handbook, he.
Yeah.
It's just, it's not anything but the handbook itself, I know that. I, I guess I'm just trying to catch up to what our plan is, and it was probably going to be part of our strategic plan about the handbook. Is this something that is going to be sent to the printers, or is this just going to be online available?
So moving forward, our plan is to just print some copies for each building and then have it online so that as policies change or rules change, we can update these handbooks and make, and have the online always up to date rather than, and, and saving some, some, I think it's approximately $3,000 a year to have these printed. And there's really not much reason to go out to a printer. The other thing is when they go to the printer, the printer changed. The other thing is when they go to the printer, the printer changes the format from a Word doc to something that they use for professional printing purposes. And somewhere over the years, the district has lost the original Word documents. So when you need to revise, it's quite an involved process. And the two handbooks here were not approved last year. That's why they're here now. But the plan is to do some revisions of our handbooks and this will come to the board for approval in July each year, all three at the same time, so that we're approving handbooks closest to the start of the school year. So we have the most up to date.
And then having print available for people.
Print, primarily for new and people who come and enroll new. But, but having it available online. And then what we did this year was we put the link in every student's campus account so that we have provided it to every student in their individual campus account.
And then I know what you're trying to touch.
Mm-hmm.
Will our handbook, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, John. Will our handbook also be on a link on my website in case?
It is. It already is.
Okay.
My only question about those was, and this is a picky design thing. And maybe it's just like the elementary school one feels like it's formatted for being printed and the high school one is like different fonts and it's just like, it's not at all the same format, so.
Because of the changes in House Bill 410, we had to make changes. And so again, somewhere in the past, the Word document has been given away. So when it came back, we had to convert it from a PDF to a Word doc in the formatting. So part of the work will be, we'll probably need to recreate these from scratch.
From scratch.
So in their final versions, they'll look.
They will get better.
Okay. Okay, that was just like, why are they so different?
Yeah, they will get better.
Okay. Like I said, that's.
But we want to make sure that we have approved handbooks.
These weren't approved last year.
They were not, for some reason.
Yeah. The other, only other question I had about something else on this list was the fundraisers. And this is just a sort of a point of, not a point of order, but just a point of clarification. Now that I think, you know, now we have a new administration and we're sort of questioning some of the things we've done before, is it, is it regular or normal for school boards to approve fundraisers? Like it seems a little like, to me, it seems a little in the weeds to be, to be approving these things. And I don't know anything about, happy to have an opinion, but it doesn't feel like, aren't part of our purview, seem more than this stuff that now is part of our purview. So I just didn't know if it's something that we need to look at or whether it's, should be approving or not.
In my experience, most school boards are not approving fundraisers at this point. They're approved at the building superintendent level.
Historical context is always interesting.
I hate to be the old lady on the board.
You're like our board historian. You have the most institutional knowledge. No, it's great.
So Dr. Johnson, when he first came on board at Bexley, there were a bunch of, there was conversation, and I think it went on to our senior about how to best tap into the resources of our community. And they actually went down with some board members and I think Dr. Johnson and I think a few administrators to the Wyoming School District and tried to talk about, because they have the, they have their own version of PDF. And then they were also trying to figure out how to, how to get funds from, from other organizations or, you know, terribly minded for the schools and the community, including parents. And so I think, this is my interpretation of what happened, they have a very hands-on approach. Like everything runs through a central fundraising system there. So that, you know, there's this feeling of, oh, we don't want to ask and ask and ask. You know, like when they're selling wrapping paper.
Yeah.
Please ask me that. Yes. So there were some moves to get away from that. But then I think there wasn't quite the will to go to that stronger system where centralized location, especially, you know, how our realtors like to be tenant. And so there was resistance to that. And so I think this is kind of, you know.
Bring it to the board.
Yeah, the idea is, oh, well, somebody will have a view of all of the asks in the community. And if there's way too many candle sales, then we can say, no, I will not approve that candle sale, which in my experience has never happened. I mean, my opinion is, we're the adults. We can do that if we want to. We shouldn't, we shouldn't take away the opportunity of our students to try and go out there and find what's important in the book about neon. So I think that's the historical context, but I couldn't agree more that I don't see that it does what we intended it to do.
So I have a, I was going to put this on in December for discussion since.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. And I have some ideas about how to do this so that things that are going to the whole community are approved. But I think most parents whose child is performing in the choir doesn't mind if there's a bake sale after because it's not going out to the community at large. It's, it's targeting people who've come to support that particular group of students in that particular event. And so some school districts do have singular fundraisers for entire districts. Wyoming does that. They have a huge thing called MEFA. Indian Hill has centralized booster centralized education foundation. They don't, centralized PTO. They don't have multiples by buildings. And so that's part of the difference, how some districts do it. So I can bring it back and maybe some, some different ideas if you want in December to talk a little more.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All righty, thank you. Resolutions. Hope, thank you to the Policy Committee once again for your work on this, Alicia and John. They reviewed.
Okay, too.
Oh, okay, I know. And, yeah, I know. We have a few policies this evening. Some are very minor with, I know since you've had a chance to review them, Ms. Miller was asked that we approve A, B, C, I got them all here, A, B, C, and then D, the Student Discipline, which is a new policy, be a first reading. So I'm going to go, I'll go through them individually, just so we have it on the record individually. May I have a motion to approve Board Policy EDEA Staff Acceptable Use?
So moved.
Second.
All in, any, any discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All righty. Board Policy JEDA, the truancy. It was strictly just a couple of words that were changed in that policy for legal reasons. May I have a?
That came from the.
From you all. Was that yours?
That came from us, but it also came from the OSBA.
OSBA.
I think Superintendent Miller said that somebody caught a mistake.
Oh, that's right. It was a mistake.
There was a mistake in the word.
OSBA or something.
The OSBA had made and they corrected it.
Okay, so simple, nothing major.
But it was, it, it made the policy redifferent, but it was a small mistake, but a big impact.
Legal, legal.
Oh, wow.
Okay. So once again, we're going to have a motion to approve JEDA truancy. May I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All righty, the third policy, I think this one just removed the zero tolerance line and clarified it.
And clarified what zero tolerance means. That can be misunderstood by parents. So adding the line that the board has zero tolerance of behaviors and has established strategies to address these behaviors. Strategies include prevention, intervention, and discipline.
And that came straight from the high revised code.
Right, that came from the code. All righty, so may I have a motion to approve Policy JFC on student conduct?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, thank you. And now for the new policy on student discipline. The entire thing is in red because it is brand new and we're going to approve this as a first reading so we can, if anyone has any further discussion now that it's out of our policy committee, that's been reviewed by our policy committee also. Okay, may I have a motion to approve Board Policy JG on student discipline for a first reading?
Second.
All in, any discussion on that since it's a new?
Just to, just to kind of give context to it, Ms. Miller and I talked about this, about what this document is. It's almost like a preamble to our conduct policy. It talks about what we do for student discipline. It's not a specific policy to where it has consequences and all of that, but it references, as you'll notice in the batch, on the second page, it references all the specific policies of vandalism, zero tolerance, student conduct, global punishment, suspension, or disrevelation, all of that.
Okay.
So this kind of basically provides context as to the authority that, not only that the administrators have, but that the teachers have. So we're clear on the relationship of the student and the teacher. And it talks about, talks about that in the fifth paragraph and it talks about this in the policy committee, how this kind of gives a context to a lot of our other specific policies. And I think it's almost like a preamble to the rest of the.
The language came from all this, do you?
Yes.
And we talked a little bit too about the necessity to making sure that there's that classroom management piece that the teacher has the authority to mean to the classroom and not always sending a student to the rest of the office, for example, to address discipline as it's happening in that moment, so.
Yeah. All righty.
I just had one question, and I think I brought this up in my comments. In the fourth paragraph, the first line, "Each case of unsatisfactory behavior by student is handled individually." And I totally understand the intent of that line. I would prefer if it also said that like, it's handled individually according to rules and guidelines established by whatever. Like, to me, that leaves it open that a teacher can handle that individually as they see fit, which it still has to fall within the acceptable discipline or, you know, behavior modification or whatever that, that we've set forward.
And that's what we, we talked about, your, your comment on that. The, the first paragraph talks about the board delegates, the school officials reauthorizing enforced district policies, regulations, and school rules governing student conduct. So the first paragraph talks about what, when the.
Setting that expectation.
So you're saying that that's a.
It talks about what the, what is going to be enforced. And then the rest of the document kind of goes into the relationship with students, with teachers, with the administrators in the fourth paragraph. Each case is handled, for instance, if, if somebody's chewing gum in the classroom, that's not, somebody's not going to be sent to the principal for something like that. But if it's a more disruptive or something else, that there's individual, there's individual discretion for the teachers, not so much in enforcing the policies of the district, but in how to handle specific.
I, I.
I understand your concern, but it, it's not, this document is not to be specific because it doesn't make it. I mean, this is kind of what we talked about and shared, what the legal guidance from the OSBA came in. Because I understand when you start giving too much, or you start giving discretion to teachers, that it doesn't give them the discretion to ignore school policy either.
Which was covered in that first paragraph.
Right, yeah. And I get all that. And I think, I think that, that actually, that makes sense, your, your thinking there. Certainly I would have, and maybe this is addressed in the actual individual policies where it's brought up, is making sure that the, I think it'd be great somewhere to say that it needs to be, any disciplinary system needs to be applied consistently. You know, because you do have instances where certain individuals or communities of individuals get harsher treatment than others for the same, for the same sorts of behaviors. And something that would say in there that, you know, yes, you have discretion, but also you need to apply the guidelines consistently with your students. And like I said, maybe this isn't the place.
I think that's a deeper conversation.
Yeah.
I think it's a much deeper conversation than just talking about student discipline. So if we're really going to have that conversation, I, I think the one doesn't have to be tied up with the other because when you start talking about the discrepancies around how students are treated in our school district, I think this is a deeper conversation.
Yeah, maybe, like I said, maybe that falls under a different or even a broader policy or statement that we talked about. It's just, that's, that's the other interpretation of that handle individually line that I see when I read that. But if it's, if we think it's going to be handled elsewhere, then we don't have to change that line. But I, those are things that.
I will send this policy out again to you as I have been, so if you have any other comments or things that you think of that you want to add, and then that will go back to the Policy Committee.
Will you meet again before our next board meeting?
We do. We meet the first week of December.
So any questions?
Yes, and I'll send these out by, probably by the, or probably early next week will be any addition, this policy again and then any other policies that may, if laws change between now and.
Which I think we voted on a bunch of them today. But at that time, if you have any questions or comments, please send them so that it can be discussed within the Policy Committee for any concerns or questions. Okay. We have the motion on the floor. All in favor of accepting this as a first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Are there any other discussion topics?
Any question? What, what's happened to our reports from administration? We used to get monthly reports from each different section. I've noticed they've come off our agenda and I'm curious.
Thought we talked about that.
I remember what happened, but I can't remember who was the last. I think Paul Ross might have been the last one. Because that was right July.
He was July.
It was July. And we kind of all talked about removing them from the agenda because they were just kind of.
They weren't timely for one.
I was trying to pick how to say that.
I thought that we were going to give, that we were going to have another, more guidance and a different opportunity.
Right, and in the meantime, our weekly report that we're getting from those individual departments as it, as it applies, comes in force on our Friday report. But we talked about going, we talked about going forward, giving them guidance on.
Send more information that we would get in the board report.
But we talked about the fact that they needed more guidance on what it really should be.
So that's what I thought we were going to get.
I think they were going to start back up at the beginning of the year.
So if you recall, I asked you to let me know what kinds of things you were wanting to hear about. So one of the things that was just brought up was around, James shared some of our analytics. So based on those questions, I've already asked James to do a report in December on our communication analytics. And we should have information on our communications audit as well to share at that point. So rather than just having a standing.
Set.
Something set that.
Arbitrary.
And a little bit of the feedback from administrators was that it's just on the schedule and they don't necessarily know what it is they're supposed to be reporting to you because there's a variety of things. What we, what might make sense, and we can talk about this more, is to have, we want building reports, is to maybe schedule those later in the year so that they can kind of report on the progress toward goals, et cetera, for the year. And to recognize student groups, et cetera, rather than you get one month to talk about your program, is to bring, bring those groups and what's going on with those organizations throughout the year. But if you have something that you feel we need to hear some additional information about this, again, the analytics was a great example, that Mr. Dennison asked for some, some clarity around what he was looking at so we can have James do a more comprehensive report of that. So, but we can add them.
I'm like a search, write a search report that I was about to be about from my job.
So as she gets, once she gets that full report and has an opportunity to digest that and then we can bring that to you. So rather than waiting, you know, if her report is July, you're not waiting till July to get something that's a little more timely. That was my understanding.
More focused and if there's something going on specifically in the high school in February, January, that we can, that we hardly can come in, Dr. Williams can report to us in February, rather than putting on a slideshow what went over the last year and you're still kind of at the end of the year or worked through at the end of the year, be more focused. I think that's what we had the discussion about, to have those, as, as Mr. Dennison asked.
Well, like I said, I mean, I agree and it's, I mean, I remember the conversation. I remember feeling that we needed to have a lot more guidance around what, what they would look like. I just didn't think they would go away entirely. So I'd like to find some way to have information on a regular basis from different sectors of the.
What if it was like quarterly, like you did elementary one quarter, middle school, high school? And then, you know, I don't, I mean, instead of.
What do, I don't know what other, what do other districts do?
They don't do that.
I, I've, not in, in my experience. One district I was in, each building did do a report toward the end of the year. So they would be, you know, spring, April, May, June, we would do reports from, from each of the levels. But they were more toward the end of the year to say, this is what we worked on this year. These were our goals. This is our progress. So I think this might be a good conversation at a, at a work session to kind of think about what you'd like to see, but also to make it meaningful and timely rather than, well, we've already scheduled, if we schedule one and then you want something additional, it, it can be.
You know, I think to me, it's beneficial about scheduling, but it makes it, it brings it to a full. So like you, every year we would have heard something from the department, from the special ed.
Ed department.
You know, from the arts. I do appreciate that. So, yeah, so I'd like to talk about it in the work.
I think it'd also be interesting.
I think it'd also be interesting, to Marley's point about, so in our, um, weekly emails, we get updates from Lysan and from Laura and from James. Um, I'd be curious, and I, I don't know exactly how, you know, maybe it's just the structure of, of the way the administration works, but whether we would also, maybe it's not every week, but get updates from, like, standard masters and special ed or eventually the technology director or Eli from athletics. Like those are similar, in my head, similar kind of groupings of, of, um, functions. But maybe it would be like once a month, you know, some of those get pulled in there just so we have a little bit of a sense of what's happening.
So special ed is typically added into Dr. Lipsit's report. Um, but we can certainly, I can certainly add some additional to those as well.
And I personally love the idea of, I know the city does this, and includes us in this, and, and I think that's nice, but we might want to, like, I, I love the notion of a state of the schools address where, you know, we're being really explicit to our community about what our goals are, then that's an opportunity to have it open to the whole community to say, for you to get up and say, these are our goals this year. This, this is what we've done to accomplish them. And also some of the building administrators could get up or different administrators could get up and say, these were our goals and this is how we achieve them.
They did just set those goals, what, in the last four months? So now would be a good time, maybe at the beginning of the year or April, I don't know, when you would report out on the progress of those goals, so.
Mm-hmm.
And whether, whether it's called that or something like that, but something, again, to sort of say that we're going to let ourselves be, communicate back to the community, but also be held somewhat accountable for those goals.
That's one of the conversations I'm having with Allerton Hill too, is how that we, again, what are the multiple ways to communicate what we're doing?
Yeah.
It's a lot of information. You can see just in your Friday reports.
Oh, no, yeah.
And that's a fair, that's barely scratching the surface. But, um, that's a conversation, a state of the schools. Um, we can add some additional things to those weekly reports. Um, and then we can talk about board reports and meetings.
Yeah, I mean, I don't need to, you know, I think we got to like 45 minute Ellen Pointe show and not tell.
Yeah. I, I think that was a little bit of the feedback from the.
I was trying not to say that. Thanks very much.
It was a little bit of the feedback from the, from the administrators was they weren't completely sure what they were supposed to be talking about. And so we agreed that you, we would give them a little, if we want to hear a report, we would give them some direction. Um, but it, it became a little, what is it you want me to talk about? They weren't really sure because they could, and again, um, you know, they don't, to talk for an hour on something and actually in talking with even some of the other groups, they appreciated the, it's not just the standing thing that they feel they have to.
Right.
Create this presentation around. Um, it's more timely.
I'm happy with all of that. I just don't want to see it go away entirely.
No, I don't think that.
There's a lot of value to it.
I don't think that was ever the plan, but just how do we make it more focused and, and timely so that you're getting things at the time you need it. But for December, there will definitely be a report, um, from our communications department.
Great. All righty. Are there any other discussion items?
Um, I passed out your final.
Oh, the governance.
Governance protocols and rules. I will send you the Word document, don't lose it.
I won't. Don't worry.
Um, as well as the PDF of the final. Um, and, um, I redid some of the formatting as you all requested. And quite frankly, my eyeballs have glazed over. So if you catch something else I have to do, let me know. Um, preferably before our work session. And then I can make those changes, just a quick email.
And I want, I wanted to apologize for not, for saying I could make it and then not being able to make it. Um, but I also, I know, um, I've been working on the sort of preamble piece of it and I, that will be emailed to all of you tomorrow. So you'll have it, you'll have it in time to discuss on Wednesday. So you'll have it.
Okay. All righty. Thank you for that contribution.
One other, one other thing, I'm sorry. I just want to go back and Mr. Ikenberry, it's here, that little free sort thing. Are we doing anything? Are we taking action on that or is it just something brought up that this is going to be done?
I don't know if we take act, we can't, we don't take action on.
Well, but if it's on our property.
I'm not quoting this from Mr. Ikenberry, by the way. Yeah.
I'm just trying to think.
Like, yeah, what would we have liked Marilyn to do with the, with the sculpture? Would we have wanted to have approval?
We, we thought that it should have come before us for approval. I think we had to have approval.
Something that small, I think.
Yeah, but we're talking about.
It's a local decision. There's nothing in law that.
The lion was a permanent exhibit. Major.
A permit.
You, we probably need some guidelines, um, from the board to say like, okay, what's the threshold? What's the, what's the footprint of?
Well, maybe it's.
If you want, if you want to approve those things, we would need guidelines.
Guidelines to do it.
So we would know.
I just.
So that we can give those to people.
Yeah, it's just, it's just another thing and, and Dennis and what, I don't want Facebook to go crazy about me.
Be opposed to the little free pantry. So I think. I already posted to Twitter. I'm sorry. You're, you're.
I see, so I think for the purposes of tonight, I think the only action the board would need to take is if you would want to stop it or.
Yeah.
Hold.
I, I, you don't.
Okay, so that's not.
John, Mr. Ikenberry doesn't need, um, a resolution or a vote to move forward, but.
We did make a recommendation though.
How do you want to get on the sidewalk where it's going to be?
Will you stop?
We did make a recommendation though.
Just waiting to see that.
That are moving it onto the property instead of leaving it in the, the small little median.
Could we, could we have Mr. Ikenberry go back to work with the Montrose folks and talk about where it might best be located and then bring, if it's going to be on our property, we can bring that back in December to let you know. But I think if you want to have a local decision to approve anything like this, then we need to write some guidelines for it.
Would that be something that you could draft for?
We could draft that and then.
Would it come to the policy first?
Usually, yeah, it's policy.
Because it seems like it would be similar to like the form we ask people to fill out for like the field trips and stuff. Like.
Right.
What are the things we'd want to know? And there's a little site plan and, you know, that kind of stuff that's a little more formalized so that they know what to do and.
Mr. Ikenberry and I can work on that together. Yeah.
Would that help too for you with stuff that's coming before you get to?
Pretty much the, the threshold is the, you're first, the city's next, the city has to win. They, they must see when you go off the application, so.
And they have limits also. They have restrictions. Yeah.
I would think the first step would be not to stick it on the side.
Yeah.
Snow.
All righty. Any other question? I think we may have set a record, all-time record here. Yeah, so may I have a motion for adjournment? You have a motion for adjournment? Are you going to sit here? We got a motion for adjournment? All in favor, say aye. Or do we need a roll call for that?
Uh, no.
Okay, everybody's in favor. Yay. Thank you. We're done.
You can sit here by yourself.
I know, you've got a babysitter. We don't, they don't need a babysitter.
Thank you.